Israel.
Peter Fox.
Ann Scarwood.
Marla Campfield.
Dan Coulson.
Thank you. Let's move into the minutes from October 21st.
Mr. Chairperson, I Gary Israel make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 21st, 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor approving the minutes from October 21st, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Let's move on then to committee and staff reports and any development reports. Anything?
Don't have anything for you tonight. Julie's got the evening off.
Okay. Any questions of any kind, staff there?
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to the agenda then. We'll go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome everyone tonight and lay out a few ground rules which would apply to each public hearing that we have tonight. It's important that you present any facts or views that you have as evidence so that an informed recommendation can be made by the planning commission to the governing body for their final decision. By state statute, the governing body does not have to hold additional public hearings on these matters, although they may listen to whoever they wish. You will be asked if there's any new information which was not heard at these hearings, to everyone's advantage, it is to everyone's advantage if you present all necessary information at these hearings. For each case, after the city zoning administrator provides the commission with background information, I'll call upon the applicant. Public comments will be heard following the applicant. Once all have been heard, the applicant will have an opportunity for final comments. The planning commission will close the hearings to public comments and then will consider the 14 factors on which to base the recommendation. During this time, the commission may direct questions to the applicant, the public, and/or city staff. You should be aware that the planning commission can recommend that the site be platted or replatted if necessary, and that a site plan may be required for approval. You should be made aware that any uses permitted outright in a district by the regulations can receive a zoning permit. Furthermore, if the applicant chooses to describe various features of their development plans, the city can only enforce those provisions which are covered in city zoning and other codes. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairperson to give their name and address. Please use the podium and speak clearly so your comments can be recorded for inclusion into our minutes. Official notices for these hearings were published in the City of Andover Municipal website, on the City of Andover Municipal website, on October 24th, 2025, and notices were mailed to the applicant and all real property owners of record in the area of notification on October 24th, 2025. The record shows at least 20 days have elapsed between the publication and mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there's evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare that the proper notification's been given. Although we do not encourage such communications, I will ask the commission if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to these hearings that they would like to share.
No.
Well, let's move on then to Agenda Item 5.1, which is a small tract plat.
Chairman and Planning Commission, this is a small tract plat on Harry Street just west of Andover Road. It was two parcels that were combined over time, and that one time housed two different single-family residences. The applicant desires to split this meets and bounds tracked up into two platted lots. We've, we've worked with the applicant and his surveyor, still have a few outstanding comments on the final plat document, mostly text corrections and clarifications that we can work with the surveyor on before this would move on to the, to the city council for ultimate acceptance.
So when he approved motion, we need to state something, something to the effect of, uh, subject to modifications or?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the applicant is here. If you have any questions of him?
If applicant would come up, if they're here, state your name and address and explain, if you'd come up to the podium so we can hear you, that way it can be recorded for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Hin Nguyen, 114 Willow Brook, Andover, Kansas.
You'd like to explain a little bit about what you're doing? We can see it on paper, but if you'd explain it, that'd be great.
I just built a house right there on a small lot that one and a half acre rather, which is a normal, single-family resident home.
Okay. You're separating the other part to be able to sell for someone to build on as well?
Because on the other part that is already have a house on it, so one lot that we cannot have two houses on it.
Yeah.
So we have to split it out.
Yeah.
So be able to build a house on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
No.
No.
We did review this one.
Yeah, thank you. In subdivision?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Has there been a location for the fire hydrants that are required?
We haven't seen a location for the fire hydrant that we discussed at the subdivision committee. That's something that the applicant could work out with the fire marshal at the time they would build that house.
If there are questions? Any other members of the public here? No. If not, entertain a motion. Someone would want to make one. Shouldn't be any findings on this one, as a fact.
Mr. Chairperson, I Gary Israel make a motion that we approve the small tract final plat for the Hine in my addition, generally located at 216 West Harry Street on the condition that all text is approved by staff before going to the governing body.
Thank you, Gary. We have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for coming. Let's move on to Agenda Item 5.2. I now call Agenda Item 5.2, which is a public hearing on Case Z-PUD 25-0010. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members, if any of them, to tend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they or relatives have any own property in notification of the notification or have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay. Now call upon the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
Mr. Chairman, you all may recognize this property as, part of the property was subject of a plat a few years ago that, that was the Hodges Seventh Edition that was zoned for a group of multifamily dwellings. Since that time, the applicant today has purchased properties surrounding it and combined, actually, I think, four parcels into this, a little over five and a half acres, that he intends to build a group of multifamily dwellings on a private street. This was discussed extensively at the subdivision committee. Since that time, the developer has decided to go with a private street in lieu of a public street so that what is now Turnpike Drive that serves the existing platted duplexes and three other single-family houses would be vacated by virtue of a final plat when it comes to us at a later date, and it would be served by a private loop driveway that would circulate through this collection of duplexes. They're, they're actually planning for 43 buildings, 86 dwelling units, all on a private street.
Yep. Any questions, Les? I don't think I have any right. Oh, do you have some, Peter?
Well, okay. Yeah, one of the things that came up in subdivision, if this became a, a private street, what about the addresses? Are they going to be unit numbers like 123, or would they have like regular?
Typically, in this group setting, it would be an address with building numbers.
Okay.
But that's, that's something that our GIS department would have to work out when they get to a final configuration.
Okay. So it would have a street address like, you know, say, I'm trying to think where Andover Road is, something 13th Street, unit number five?
That's the typical method for multifamily.
Okay.
Also in subcommittee, the discussion about additional green space was brought up, and now that they vacated that area, is there a possibility to provide more?
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company is here on behalf of the applicant. He can address that question.
Would the applicant like to come? Speak on the case?
Good evening, Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. Agent for the applicant. Sorry, I just figured you were still had some more staff questions and we're gonna stall a little bit before.
We might have some more for Les.
So glad to tackle it. I know we have, we keep playing with this, and as we play with this site plan, I think it gets a little better each time. We made some improvements to the entryway, and I would like to point out to the planning commissioners that the present street sits probably further west than what we're proposing. We're able to purchase one more lot, the eastern lot there where the four units are, that moving that street that far east helps us with the vision on 13th Street. And the farther we can get it east, just the better and safer it's going to be as you go over the turnpike. I think, I talked to Mr. Gray about, hey, some more green space. We haven't yet completely figured out the detention and that, what's my final size? So the Reserve A that you're seeing down in the southeast corner of that where I'm showing a little pond at the bottom, that's the end, that's the existing one for Hodges Seventh. We're gonna need a certain amount of space in there for, for the detention for this, which he's leaning towards dry detention, which will give us green space to use when it's not serving as a detention facility. And also, I think he's willing to leave that amount of green space. If that detention pond's not that big, we're gonna leave that amount of green space. I'm cautious how I answer to the planning commission because I'm not going to add a unit, but we may move them around, but that's still going to give you green space at some other location. If we, my best example, there's one unit north of the five existing ones that are under, or built, they're built. You know, we may move that south and leave some green space up there at the entry, but I think what you see there is where we're going to stop in density. It's the best answer I have.
Thank you. More questions? No more questions? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Any more questions of Les or staff?
Fire has reviewed all this, and they don't have any issues about getting in and getting out.
Correct. They were happy to see that it's a loop configuration rather than the, the minimum turnarounds that the fire code allows.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this case? Hey? Any written communication been received? No more final questions from the committee? Okay. Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the commission wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The planning commission will now deliberate the request. There are 14 factors on which the commission must consider in order to make findings and ultimately a recommendation. Are we ready? Go for it. Okay. All right. Staff items, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property in the change of the zoning, if the chaining in zoning were approved? Staff, adequate utilities are in place and can easily serve the development. Number two, if the zoning change request was approved, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted, or have in lieu of dedications made in order to provide needed rights, way easements, building setback lines, or access control? Staff, the rezone in itself, partially a replat of the Hodges Seventh plat, and the additional parcels would be platted as part of the PUD establishment. Any such dedications can be made at the time of the final PUD. Number three, if the zoning change request was approved, would the subject property need a screening plan for existing or potential uses? Staff, the subject property is surrounded by other residential zone lots, so additional screening would not be required. Landscaping would be reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee. Number four, what fact-based information is support, in support of or in opposition to the requested zoning changes has staff received? Staff, none. If there has been an error in the application of these zoning regulations to the subject property, would the requested zoning change correct the error? Staff states, no error is known to exist. Six, how suitable staff and commission council, I'm sorry, how suitable or unsuitable is the subject property for its current zoning? Staff states, the subject property is a collection of residential lots which are suitable for their current zoning. Number seven, is the length of time the subject property has been vacant or undeveloped under its current zoning a factor in the zoning change request? Staff states, no. Number eight, how reasonably well-suited will this requested zoning change of the subject property be with the current zoning of nearby properties? Staff states, the change would be very well-suited. The area is classified with the mixed residential neighborhood place type under the comprehensive plan for which a duplex development is a highly desirable use.
Concur.
Concur. Number nine, has the zoning change been requested because conditions in the area of the subject property have changed or are changing? If so, what is the nature and significance of these conditions? Staff states, the Hodges Seventh development has been completed to a point, and the developer wishes to continue the complex. A planned unit development is necessary to be able to construct additional duplexes as planned.
Concur.
Number 10, what are the current land uses, character and condition of the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood? Staff, the neighborhood is largely low to medium-density residential with the I-35 driveway to the north.
Concur.
Concur. Number 11, would the proposed zoning change of the subject property allow land uses which might have detrimental effects on nearby properties, and if so, how? Staff, no such detrimental effects are anticipated. The inclusion of a single access point to the public street system prevents any increase in traffic congestion within nearby neighborhoods.
Concur.
Concur. Number 12, how would the requested zoning change conform with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted master plans and policies? Staff, the area is classified with the mixed residential neighborhood place type under the comprehensive plan for which a duplex development is highly desirable.
Concur.
Concur. Do any professional persons knowledgeable or conditions that affect this zoning change request have information or recommendations to provide which would be helpful to this evaluation? Staff, support the establishment of proposed planned unit development. 14, how would the potential loss in value or hardship imposed on the applicant compare to the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare if there is a change from the current zone to the requested zone? Staff, no such hardships are anticipated. Implementation of this PED and subsequent construction of the complex would serve to increase housing availability and variety in Andover. Thank you. Having discussed and reached conclusions on our finding of fact, I'd remind the commission that a proper motion should reflect the factors on which it's based, and if approval is recommended, then consideration should be given to any conditions that might be attached. Is there a motion to either recommend approval, approval and modification and approval, disapproval, or to table the discussion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the application, I Marla Campfield move that we recommend to the governing body that Case Number Z-PUD 25-0010 be approved based on the findings, the planning commission on findings, number 8, 10, 11, and 12, as recorded in the summary of this hearing.
Thank you, Marla. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Gary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on then to Item 5.3, which is a public hearing on Case Number Z-SU 25-0003. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they or a relative own property in the area or have a notification, own property in the area of notification or have a conflict of interest? None?
None. And this is an abutment to it. It's not a part of Terranide.
Okay.
So I feel there's no conflict of interest.
No financial interest in the project?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. I now call upon the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case.
The applicant in this case desires to use a room above a detached garage for accessory dwelling unit, short-term rental. Staff sees no, no problem with that. It's a large lot, good access, good separation from residences in the nearby area. On the golf course, there are existing similar short-term rentals on the golf course, so we, we have no opposition to the case. The applicant's here.
Okay. Very good. I now call upon the applicant. If you'd want to come up and state your name and address and explain anything you'd like to.
My name is Ben Lawrence, 505 North Glendavon. I'm sure you're familiar with the property, but I do have a detached garage. It's about a thousand square foot apartment, one bedroom, that I'm looking to do some short-term rentals on. Mostly executives, traveling nurses, people like that. They do have their own parking spot in the garage, like Les referred to, median access right off Central, so.
Yeah.
That's what I'm requesting.
Any questions?
Is this a, like Airbnb or whatever?
Airbnb or VRBO. I haven't decided that.
Cool.
I appreciate you coming and getting, requesting approval for it, because in my almost five years on the committee, I don't think we've had more than three or maybe two come and request it, but if you look, they're out there.
I've looked at the site.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, they're out there, and maybe some of them got their permit before I came on, but I kind of doubt most of them did.
Very doubt.
I'm just, I think we're pretty easy to do business with here, so I appreciate you coming and, yeah, thank you. Remember that? We pulled them all up like a year ago. Someone came, and that was like the, maybe two years ago. It was like the first one we'd seen in a long time. We pulled it up, and there were like plenty of them in business. Yeah. Well, thank you. Any members of the public that would like to speak on the case? Any written communication been received? No final comment probably from the applicant. Good. All right. Hearing no further public comment, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the commission wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The planning commission will now deliberate the request. There are 14 factors which the commission must consider in order to make findings and ultimately a recommendation. I can do these. Does adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property if the change in zoning were approved? Staff, adequate public facilities are already in place, serving the primary dwelling. Two, if the special use request was approved, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted, or have in lieu of dedications made in order to provide streets, right of way, easements, building setback lines, or access control? Staff, no. If the, number three, if the special use request was approved, would the subject property need a screening plan for existing or potential uses? Staff, no. Or four, what fact-based information in support of or in opposition to the requested zoning change has staff received? Staff, none. If there has been an error in the application of these zoning regulations to the subject property, would the requesting zoning change correct the error? Staff, no, no error is known to exist. Six, how suitable or unsuitable is a subject property for its current use? Staff, the subject property features a single-family dwelling and is suitable for its current zoning.
Concur.
Concur. Seven, is the length of time the subject property has been vacant or undeveloped under its current zoning a factor in the special use request? Staff, no.
Concur.
Concur. Eight, how reasonably well-suited will this requested special use of the subject property be with the current zoning of nearby properties? Staff, the subject property would be well-suited. It has a low-density use that would not interfere with any nearby properties.
Concur.
Concur. Nine, has a special use been requested because conditions in the area of the subject property have changed or are changing? If so, what is the nature and significance of these conditions? Staff, no.
Concur.
Ten, what are the current land uses, character, and condition of the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood? Staff, the subject property is surrounded by other residential properties as well as the Terranide Golf Course.
Concur.
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 Would this proposed special use of the subject property allow land uses which might have detrimental effects on nearby properties? If so, how? Staff, no.
Concur.
Twelve, how would the requested special use conform with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted master plans and policies? Staff, the requested special use complies with the property's classification under the traditional neighborhood place type.
Concur.
Concur. Thirteen, do any professional persons knowledgeable on conditions that affect this specially used request have information or recommendations to provide which would be helpful in this evaluation? Staff, staff supports the proposed special use application.
Concur.
Concur. Fourteen, how would the potential loss in value or hardship imposed on the applicant compare to the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare if there is a change from the current use to the requested use? Staff, the change would have no foreseeable adverse impact on public health, city, public health, safety, or welfare.
Concur.
Concur.
Mr. Chairperson, I do have one additional question, and I don't know if staff or the applicant could answer that. How do you know when 30 days are up? You know, it's short-term. And what happens if somebody stays there 40 days?
What happens is it's a zoning violation. How do we know that? That's a great question. Usually, those type of things are complaint-based. I'm not going to drive by and check on Ben daily to count days.
I'm just curious, because it does say 30 days, and.
Correct.
I can imagine that a, a traveling nurse might come and, you know, have a contract for 60 days working for somebody. I mean, do they have to move out for a period of time and then come back in? You know, I'm just questioning. I have no problem with it at all.
It, I believe that definition says occupied for 30 days, so if that traveling nurse is there for 60 days and goes home for two days, the clock starts over.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah. I, I think it's great that the Lawrences have a place that has a garage, you know, and a separate facility for people, and it is in a very nice area. You know, I have no issue with it at all. I was just curious how you control that 30 days.
Yeah. Good question. Having discussed and reached conclusions on our finding of fact, I'd remind the commission that a proper motion should reflect the factors on which it's based, and if approval is recommended, then consideration should be given to any conditions that might be attached. Is there a motion to either recommend approval, modification and approval, disapproval, or to table the discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairperson, having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the application, I Gary Israel move that we recommend to the governing body that Case Number Z-SU 25-0003 be approved based on the findings of the planning commission on findings, number 8, 10, and 12, recorded in the summary of this hearing.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, second by Peter. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thanks for coming. Yep.
I'm a little unfamiliar with this process, but would this rental be subject to the transient guest tax? Okay. It is. Okay. I just, okay. So I'll have to charge that, actually. What is, what is, what is it now? Eight, eight and a half percent? Okay, and it has to be remitted to the City of Andover?
I believe, if I, if I understand how Airbnb and VRBO works, that they actually.
They include it?
Capture that.
Okay.
But.
I haven't, I haven't even logged on, so. I haven't, I haven't even logged on, so.
Yes, remitted to the state, not to the city.
Turned over to the convention and tourism board, so. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairperson, I make a motion to recess the planning commission and convene the board of zoning appeals.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Motion passes. Let's move on then to item number five point four. I'll get there. I think my online here is not quite right. Okay, it's under a different link. Alright, item five point four, which is a public hearing, a case number BZA dash V two-five dash zero zero one seven. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in the case because they are a relative own property in the area of notification or have any conflicts of interest.
No.
And I'll call upon the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case.
The applicant in this case desires to add another shed to his property on south end of a road at Stanton. The lot is almost three-quarters of an acre on a corner. The variance is, is necessary because of the accumulation of the three accessory dwellings. Pretty simple request, in this neighborhood, in the surrounding area, there are several large accessory structures, whether they be one large or a combination of some accessory buildings. So this is not out of character for the neighborhood.
Very good. Any questions for Les? Seems like we see at least one of these every month.
Yes, and we're hoping to fix that when we update our zoning regulations soon.
Any questions? I'll now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and in response to the city zoning administrator. If you'd state your name and address and explain what you're doing, that'd be great.
Curtis Nelson, one eleven East Stanton Road. We have need to increase the storage on the property and quite honestly, we're just ignorant of the accumulated square footage we were restricted to on the property.
Sure.
So, but yeah, we, we need to add another shed
Yep.
to get some things in out of the weather, clean the yard up, so forth.
Yep. Any questions? Curtis? The applicant?
A type of construction you're looking at for your shed?
It is built by Dirksen Buildings, just east of town here, three or four miles. It is wood constructed, will be wood-sided and a metal roof. They're, they're pretty good buildings.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Have you talked to any of your neighbors about constructing?
I have one right there.
Okay.
Did you come in support or against? Oh.
I think everybody in the area got a letter.
Yeah, everybody did, within a certain area distance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think he has a problem with it. He lives directly behind me.
Yeah, I was making a joke. If you were sitting with him, I didn't think you were here and opposed to it. Sometimes if someone's opposed, they're usually not sitting together. Yeah, that's a problem.
You can see your shed from, sorry.
Any other questions?
I meant condo.
And I need to get my truck out of my fence.
Sure. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for coming. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lanice Nelson, one eleven East Stanton. So, is that for the forty-six square feet that we're over and for the, it says ten feet variance on the twenty-five foot? Because that'll help them line up together with the existing shed that we already have, so I didn't know if that.
It's both.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question. Are there any, I guess, members of the public that want to speak? Oh, we got. Okay, well, state your name and address.
I've been in Andover for thirty-two years. It's getting pretty fancy now, I tell you. I don't have any problems with, with the Nelsons putting up the shed. It's, I just didn't want it to be pink or red, white and blue. And it shouldn't, it should be reasonable request. As far as our homeowners association, we need to go through some, some, keep it honest and so forth and have people realize that we have a neighborhood and that we have a role to play with protecting our property values and so forth, but we just, I, I think Anna Warrington called, she's the president, the treasurer of the homeowners association Lakeview Heights. So, it's just a matter of getting permission from the Jacobsons and also permission to your neighbor right east of you and to write that down and, and, you know, just to square things away, just make sure that everybody's on the level.
Sure.
But, yeah, I don't have any problems with it. So, I'm sorry about the comment and not seeing.
Could you repeat your name and your address?
Michael Jacobson.
Michael Jacobson.
S E N, J A C O B S E N.
I did have a voicemail from Anna Warrington today. We weren't able to get together for a conversation.
Not a problem.
Thank you for coming. Any written communication been received? I guess just the verbal, yeah, somewhat. Hearing no more comment, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comment unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the finding of fact. The board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation.
I can read that if you'd like.
Yep, that'd be great.
Does the evidence demonstrate that the physical surrounding shape or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for the owner, lessor or occupant? Staff, the subject property is over three times the minimum size for its zoning district and a large backyard enclosed by an existing fence.
Concur.
Concur.
Number two, granting the variance will result in a material detriment or injury to the property or improvements in the neighborhood? Staff, no such detrimental effects are anticipated.
Concur.
Concur.
Three, granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood? Staff, no such detrimental effects are anticipated.
Concur.
Concur.
Number four, the request for variance is not based exclusively on the desire of the owner, lessor, occupant or applicant to make more money out of the property? Staff, the request is to install an accessory shed for personal use.
Concur.
Concur.
Specific conditions to be met? The requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by any action of the property owner or the applicant? Staff, the subject property is over three times the minimum area for its zoning district and already features multiple small accessory structures, one of which is an existing non-conformance.
Concur.
Concur.
Number two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lessor or occupant of the land or structures? Staff, strict application of these zoning regulations would prevent the property owner from utilizing an amount of accessory structure space that would be commensurate with the treatment of the property owners who have similar lots?
Concur.
Concur.
Number three, granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents? Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated?
Concur.
Concur.
Number four, the request, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity or general welfare? Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
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 And number five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit or, and intent of these zoning regulations? Staff, the requested variance is not opposed to the promotion of public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare in the city.
Concur.
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 Thank you. Is there a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove or table the discussion?
I'll make the motion. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined the findings of fact have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection eleven dash one zero six B two of the zoning regulations and KSA twelve seven nine five E, I Marla Camfield move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V twenty-five dash zero zero one eight as requested.
Thank you, Marla. We have a second? I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the approval of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion passes. A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than forty-five days from the date of this hearing. If anyone's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah. And like how quick, it says forty-five days, but how quick would he be able to get it? Usually. If I don't forget, sometimes I forget, but I can make sure and do it by the end of the week. Alright, thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Let's move on to agenda item five point five, which is under five point four. I now call agenda item five point five, which is a public hearing on case number BZA dash V two-five dash. Is that right? On my, on my online, it's switched. Five point four is really five point five. I just want to make sure I'm reading the case number right. Maybe we're out of order. When I click on five point five there, it brings up the documents for five point five. Does it do that same for you guys?
No, but it's misnumbered. On five point five is misnumbered, five point four.
Okay, well, we did, so we just did.
Case number twenty-five dash oh oh seventeen?
Oh seventeen's what we just did. Okay, I just need to make sure I get the other one.
Just flip off the numbers.
Yeah, I just make sure we didn't do something wrong here. So we did seventeen, right?
No, that's what this was.
No. Is what? Okay, let me get to that one. Okay. Alright, now call agenda item five point five, which is a public hearing on case number BZA dash V two-five dash zero zero one seven. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll call the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they are a relative own property in the area of notification or have any conflicts of interest.
No.
No.
Once again, I know who these people are, but I didn't know they were doing this, so.
Yeah.
I don't know them that well.
Yeah. I'll now call upon the city zoning administrator for a report on the case.
This case is more of your typical accessory structure that is larger than allowed in the SF one district. The district has a maximum size of five hundred square feet. This is a twenty-four by twenty-four, five hundred seventy-six square feet. So it requires a variance for the size of the structure and because it's a corner lot, this is considered a rear yard. It would also require a variance of the rear yard, twenty-five foot setback in order to allow this to be sixteen feet from the property line. It's in an older neighborhood that is large lots. Many of those have large accessory buildings or large detached garages, so it's, it's not at all out of character for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Who's here to represent them? Anybody?
Nobody.
I don't see anyone.
Yeah, nobody here. Nobody to call. Just for the record and the recording, there's nobody here to call, no applicant. Also no members of the public available. Any questions of Les, any staff?
So when, when, when looking at this, the GIS map shows it as two properties, but the tax records don't show eight, ten as a property?
This is a recent lot split and I believe Scott Martin, the applicant, owns both.
He does, yeah. I was just curious, I was trying to figure out, because I don't think the math is quite right on his sketch. I think it's only sixty-nine feet going to the side, not ninety-two point six. It's ninety-two point six if you don't have the building there that he's proposing. Anyway, what I was trying to do is look for the size of the house, so I could then compare the value of the ten and a half percent of the lot being and I couldn't find it, so. Again, it's not a big deal, I'm just curious. If the math isn't correct, then you, either that or I'm not looking at it right.
It's only six.
Where? I believe Julie did the math on that.
Well, it's a hundred and eighteen feet.
I got you.
So you go twenty-five for the setback plus twenty-four.
Carry the two.
And you subtract that from one eighteen, that's sixty-nine feet, not ninety-two six. It's ninety-three feet if you just take the twenty-five foot setback. Right?
You're right.
Good catch there.
So I just was curious about lot coverage, but it appears to be okay.
Julie did the math on that lot coverage and she came up with ten point, ten point five percent.
Yeah, I did too, but I had to guess about the house. I couldn't tell. I think it's about a thousand sixty-five square feet if you include the garage as well. And that plus the five seventy-five gets you to that ten and a half percent. That's my guess.
And I'm not sure if she pulled that off of building permit records.
It could be.
Since it is a recent construction.
Butler County GIS and it shows it under construction. You can see the workers out there putting the house together.
Well, we still good to go though with those numbers?
I'm just assuming they're right.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Well, thanks for your research. No members of the public just here to speak, no written communication been received?
No, sir.
Okay. No applicants here. Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no, no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. Board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of required findings of fact. Board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation.
I can do this. Are we ready?
Yep.
Does the, number one, the physical surroundings, shape and topography of the property would result in practical difficulty as distinguished from mere inconvenience for the owner, lessor or occupant? Staff states the parcel is a corner lot, meaning that it has more building setback requirements than most SF one properties. Additionally, the lot is nearly twice the minimum size for the zoning district, leaving lots of space for accessory structures without approaching the maximum lot coverage requirements. Number two. Sorry, concur. Number two, granting the variance will result in a material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the, in the neighborhood? Staff, no such detriments are expected.
Concur.
Concur. Number three, granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property substantially substantially increased congest, traffic congestion, increased fire risk or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood? Staff states no such detriments are expected.
There, there was no public communication.
No written comments received from the public.
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Okay. Round number four. Number four, the request for variance is not based exclusively on a desire of the owner, lessor, occupant or applicant to make more money out of the property? Staff states the request is for an accessory shed for personal use.
Concur.
Concur. Specific conditions to be met? Number one, the
Number one, the requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by an action of the property owner or the applicant? Staff states the parcel is a corner lot, meaning that it has more building setback requirements than most SF1 properties. Additionally, the lot is nearly twice the minimum size for the zoning district, leaving lots of space for accessory structures without approaching the maximum lot coverage requirements.
Concur.
Number two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in necessary hardship for the owner, lessor, occupant, or, of the land or structures? Staff, the strict application of the zoning provisions, of the provisions of these zoning regulations would dictate that the structure be placed basically in the middle of the owner's backyard, limiting the ability to enjoy the use of their, of their property to its fullest, fullest extent.
Concur.
Concur. Number three, granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents? Staff states no such adverse effects are anticipated. Concur. Number four, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare? Staff states no such adverse effects are anticipated. Concur. Number five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations? Staff states the requested variance is not opposed to the promotion of public health, safety, morals, comfort, or, or general welfare in the city? Concur. Thank you. Is there a motion to either approve, modify, approve, disapprove, or table the discussion?
I can make a motion if you'd like.
Thank you.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have found, have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection 11 dash 106 dot B2 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12 759E, I, Peter Fox, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V25 0017 as requested.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than 45 days from the date of this hearing. If anyone's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator.
Is there a requirement to have the map be corrected for future use?
I don't believe so. We'll correct that up on the building permit application. I think I've figured out what that dimension is. It would be to the extreme north property line of the two lots that the applicant owns.
Mr. Chairperson, I make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any member items tonight?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned. Well, I was a little, little longer-winded than we thought, but.